Great, but uh, call to the earth. I knew this is the reply of the United States of America. Considered public, the nations that dance, one nation of God, invisible, the ready to touch the throne.
At this time, we will have the Capitol Outlay Presentation by Mr. Sitzman.
Okay.
Should be good.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. Just wanted to update on the Capitol Outlay Project and just give you some brief background and scope for it. It's all, uh, it's standard from the usual Outlay Projects as far as the budget's concerned and schedule. And then if we move into this, you'll see on the scope side of it, we are looking towards the exterior doors at the athletic entrance at the high school, the middle high school. So those would be the, the main base scope. And then we would look towards providing additional alternates like we did for previous ones. So that way we can scale it to what we would need. And then I've attached a few pictures here just to show you what, what specifically are the concerns? Some of the doors, uh, they're, they're showing their age and, uh, one of the, uh, one of the top windows there has a crack through, through the security glass. So a bit, bit of a concern that, that has been brought up and that's why we want to address it. For this next one, you'll also see there's some irregularities in the floor that we'd like to address. So that way any safety concerns or trips hazards will be, will be taken care of. So, pretty, uh, pretty straightforward project, but, uh, if anyone has any questions, I'd gladly field them.
So ju- just as a reminder to the board and the community, a Capitol Outlay Project is limited to a maximum of $100,000 and that's in totality. So that includes not only the, the materials and the construction, but also the architectural and construction management fees. We wind up getting about 75 to 78,000 dollars worth of actual work. And obviously architectural fees and, and, uh, construction management are added onto there. Additionally, we are limited to one contractor. So any past Capitol Outlays have been lighting because we only needed an electric, electrical contractor. Uh, and here, um, we will need, you know, one, one trade, I should say, not contractor, one trade, um, to replace the, those doors and hopefully we, we can get a few more doors replaced as well.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, I'm just wondering, are we putting any kind of a handicapped entrance, so electronic door?
So the, what's currently there, there's access, uh, for the FOB system for security on the one set of doors. And then all those doors would be ADA compliant. Um, so any, anything that would be specked out would, would be accessible.
Good question. Any, any others?
And this is a 24, 25 school year?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. torts, yo, is any update on the 200, raising this 250,000 from the governor at all or?
Well, uh, there's a lot of priorities in the legislature and I do not think that, um, this, um, this is going to be one of them.
Okay. Now, I know it's, uh, being talked about, I just wonder if there's anything been moved forward. It's, it's tough to do some of these projects with just 100K. Um, so.
I was on, um, you know, to speak to that point, I was on a, um, a statewide conference call with, um, I think it was the Senate Majority Leader. I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And I asked that question about increase as did others, um, because as I said, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot if I put it in your pocket, but it's not when you're doing construction on a, on a campus our size. Uh, and I, and I don't, at this point, I don't think there's enough movement to get that changed. And what we had talked about a year plus ago was, was there was some movement to move that to 250,000 dollars, which would really be a game changer for our district and we'd be able to get an awful lot more work done. That's still a push by a number of different organizations, including the, the ones that I belong to. But I don't think we have, uh, I don't think we have enough right now to get that changed.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
So many screens are sharing. So you can read it for you. Next up is a technology presentation, Mrs. Gregory, Mr. Watson and Mrs. Locking.
Good evening, everybody. Um, it's great to be here. We're going to give you a very brief update on, um, our district technology plan, where we are at with our goals. Um, we still have a district technology committee in place that has been so helpful in this endeavor. Um, it still says January 17th on our presentation because it was supposed to be during the snowstorm. The first goal in our tech plan is all about integrating technology to support student achievement and engagement. And the main focus we have in that goal is professional development to staff. We are so lucky to have, um, Mrs. Locking as a part-time, a half-time, um, technology integrator across the district now. So she supports all of our teachers, uh, pre-K through 12. And, um, these are just some of the projects that we are working on. We eventually want to have students more empowered to help each other with technology at the middle and high school level. But, um, our tech integrator is working on, um, helping teachers to implement the SAMR model, the ISTI standards and the New York State Computer Science Standards, um, through, you know, instructional coaching, one-on-one meetings, um, group sessions. She's really doing an outstanding job in this role and I'm going to turn it over to her so she can talk a little bit more about what she's doing.
There you go. So, um, we're working with the SAMR model. You can probably hear me. I don't, should not have followed her. So the SAMR model, um, we start at the bottom with the S and the A and there are more, um, enhancement to the normal education that goes on in the classroom. So technology be, would be used at the base as just a substitution for whatever's going on in the classroom. For example, like putting, uh, a Google Doc on instead of using a worksheet and paper. Um, the next one up would be augmentation, um, that acts as a direct substitute with a little bit of enhancement to the assignment or a project that they're working on. So, um, you might be using a voice to text, um, to write a paper. Uh, you'll be using maybe like, um, the little bit of technology that helps with spelling and grammar check. Um, and then modification and redefinition, that's where you're transforming your education and the assignments. So modification, which would allow for a significant task redesign. So you're really enhancing that, um, assignment and taking it to the next level. You're working on, um, Google Apps, but you might be working with me. You're doing more collaboration with your work, um, where students can maybe add, um, comments to other work and work together on assignments. And redefinition is redefining that techno, or that assignment with technology and ma- and doing something that you wouldn't have seen before. So this might be a virtual field trip that takes, um, using Google Earth that takes that classroom right into, um, different parts of the world. They could also be using Google Meets that would have, um, other classrooms involved in around the world, learning different cultures. So that's really our next step, um, in moving along. And each step, you just kind of ask yourself, is, are they getting any beneficial, um, ad- additives or adding any benefits to the students on, um, or is this a waste of time? You don't want to add screen time just for the sake of technology. You want to make sure that the screen time is beneficial to the students and classroom teachers, whatever. So, um, that's really each step you want to make sure, is it enhancing? Is this me, this is all my job? Okay. So, um, I started last year as point three. This year I'm point four as far as, um, technology integration. The rest of my day, I am in the classroom with students, um, teaching AIS. So I have worked with our building at the EE, at the elementary building, using or in, implementing the, uh, new report cards. We went to standards-based GLP has been doing that. So I've just been supporting GLP and EE this year with, um, any problems or issues that come up on that end. I also help and work with administrators and technology as far as, um, going for any technology, um, are we investing in other, uh, new technology? Are we evaluating the technology that we have to make sure we're still, um, getting, um, financially responsible purchasing? I do professional development. I work with, um, new hire training. So we provide that in the summer for all our new hires. I help with, um, any professional development needs that come up along the year. Currently I'm working, um, for the science department, putting something together for them, um, that they had asked for with our technology survey that went out last year. Classroom support. I assist teachers in integrating daily activities. Um, project-based learning. Um, I'm helping now with our PC switch over at the elementary building. We're switching from the Macs to the PC, much more fiscally responsible and practical. Um, and I collaborate with the teachers to analyze, um, data and technology and assist in the, um, development of project-based learning activities that incorporate technology. I work with Brandon pretty closely and pretty regularly, um, and other stakeholders. I serve on the district technology committee. Um, I try to stay up to date on New York State policies and make sure that we are getting the most up-to-date, um, resources. And I try to stay on top of this new AI, something if we don't, I'm not sure what we have here, but if we have not gotten a, an AI policy, I would probably encourage the board to think about considering getting a district one, if not building level ones, especially at the high school. Um, again, parent and community engagement. I work at the elementary next year. I think we're gonna do, um, a parent night where we're gonna have technology, um, information session. And for the past two years, I've also done the GLP parent information night where we explain the technology that the students will use in the classroom. And again, stressing that it's not just extra screen time, that they're not just put on the computers for the sake of being on the computers. Um, any questions, concerns, issues? I think I covered mostly.
Great job. Thanks.
All right.
Okay. Goal two is all about school and community connections and equitable access to technology. So this is all about increasing the availability of devices, internet access and tech tools to members of our community. We are surveyed on this every year by the state and we find that we, we have a lot of, um, people with technology available in our community. So it's not a huge problem. But you know, we, we are looking into potential ways to, um, assist people through, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, um, local libraries. Um, we are working to provide parents with more training opportunities. Um, as Shannon mentioned, um, you know, think, we do things like parent portal training already. But we're learning, we're, we're looking to expand that, um, as part of our tech plan. Redesigning the district website was also part of this goal in the tech plan and, and that's been done, but it's going to, I think, going to be done again. And, um, we just continue to utilize our tech tools for communication with parents and community members. So, um, I think I, I kind of talked about all of this already. Got ahead of myself here, but, um, goal three is all about the equipment and infrastructure. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Watson.
Room's favorite. So goal three was part of the technology plan adaptation. And one of the biggest things that we looked at was a standardized hardware replacement procedure. Get on a list, help budget out years going out. So I'm just gonna update a little bit on that and tell you, uh, about what's been going on. Here's our objectives. Um, we've gone over it. Um, so it's a little bit of a refresher. The biggest thing last summer, and nobody really knows that I did it, so it means I did it right, is I rebuilt the entire data center, I guess, ground up, all new software, all new servers, lots of interesting late nights and things like that. But, um, it's new, it's fresh. It hadn't been touched since 2015. Um, so I feel very confident and, um, sleep a little bit better at night, knowing that we're, uh, we're upgraded and we're ready to go. I moved, uh, we, we didn't have a true different backup server room. And as all, we all know, the Cogen plan, every time power goes out, we'd have an issue with all the servers here. In the elementary, I took the upstairs network closet that was redone in a capital project. Really nice room, air conditioning. I put a rack in it, moved a server over there. So we do have redundancy now. So if something does happen here, there is a backup to it. And it, um, kind of aligns with what cybersecurity insurance is asking us and just some good general recommendation and best practices. Shannon talked about it. Um, big project this year is the elementary. We're going from a Mac desktop and laptop MacBook to a PC laptop with a docking station. Um, we went from two devices to one and it met and aligned with the goals that the tech committee talked about the previous year. So grades three to 12, standardized hardware. Kids are using Chromebooks three to 12. It started over at the high school where grades six to 12, the staff here were given a laptop and a docking station. They can take it, they can walk in a room, plug in. It doesn't matter what room they're in anymore. They all know what to do. It's made life a lot easier, especially on us. Um, I can tell you just tickets day-to-day with substitute teachers, things like that. It's probably been cut 50% because they all know it's one cord that they have to plug in and away they go. So that's been very helpful. Um, we'll probably be done with the elementary, I would think, end of the month. Um, not pushing it real hard. We've been doing grade level. We'll replace them. Shannon will go in, train them, make sure they're comfortable and things like that and turn it over. And we've had very little questions, comments or problems from the staff. There's been one or two little things, but overall it's been a lot less stressful than I had thought it would be. Um, Chromebooks, we went, um, previously the district was looking at Chromebooks on a five-year replacement schedule. And at year four and five, they were just breaking down. They were slow. And the tech committee really talked about it and had some good discussion and we've moved to a three-year plan. It's a $250 device to get five years out of it. It's really asking a lot considering our $1,200 phones are like two years and three years. Oh, I gotta replace it. So, um, knock on wood, grades nine through 12 and the elementary, we've had very little actual problems other than a kid dropping it or something getting spilled on it. The slowness, the issues that the teachers had talked about, those, those are gone. So that was a, um, great move and made Darren in my life a lot easier, especially here. iPads, K to two, we have iPads. Um, it's great for those grade levels. Work so much better with the little learners. Um, we've been doing a grade level a year, um, just middle of the year. We've been doing them. We kind of pushed them off because in the summer, instead of ordering everything and having it come and sit here for six months and you have six months of warranty gone to waste. Um, the iPads, we order and they come in, we do them in the middle of the year. So, um, we're gonna be starting grade two over break. Grade one will be next year and those will be on the three to four-year replacement plan. It really depends on how Apple does with their pricing. They did raise them quite a good jump this year. So, like everything else. Another cool thing that I did and I worked with Shannon very closely was in grades K to two, teachers were struggling with getting the kids logged into the 10 different programs they use on a daily basis. Type, um, you had iXL, Earl, uh, things like that, that they had to have a different login for. So the teachers constantly would spend hours in the summer making up these cards and then struggling with the kids. And a, uh, free program actually for education company came out and what they do is they'll do two things for us. They do all our rostering behind the scenes. So it, we used to pay 10 or 15 days of summer staff development to a couple of teachers to come in and do all these rosters and roll everything out. This program now does 95% of that. It's all automatic. There, it, it's like technology, you know, is, is more complicated and automated things get, there are issues that happen, but it's really helped. It's really made things a lot more streamlined. Um, we've brought iReady into that and it's just really a great program. But the cool thing for K to two is all the iPads have cameras in them. So the kids now, what we do is the teachers go in and the teachers can print it. Each kid gets a QR code that attaches to their login and username. So all they have to do is hold the QR code over the iPad camera. It logs the kids in, logs them into their programs and away they go. No more, hey, I gotta remember, what is my password for this? What is my password for that? And you know, this is kindergarten and first graders, they have enough trouble. So.
Can you do that for the board?
Yeah, sure. There you go. Here's your QR code.
It is actually really cool. That could use that help.
Um, when we did this cut over, the few teachers that I had tested, I didn't hear anything for like two weeks. And I was very nervous and I emailed them. I'm like, is no news, good news or is no news, bad news? And they're like, no news is good news on this. And I'm like, um, so we are working towards, some of the third grade teachers have expressed some interest in at least trying it with the kids as they transition from second grade iPad to third grade Chromebook. So, um, that's probably the coolest thing and the happiest thing I can say. It's not so boring. Um, Lori's gonna touch on, um, our tech request form and how it came to be and things like that. And I will show you an example and she can talk a little more about it. There you go, Lori.
Okay. So you see our new form, it's in the Jopee form, fill-in form, um, that's on the screen. And you know, one of the things that had come up at one of the departments was the name is, you know, how, how can people request new partners? You know, if you want something different, you want new hardware, new software, you know, how can we ask people for it? And we knew we needed to have an organized process that involved, um, an approval flow. You know, it was very important to us to make sure that, um, department chairs, building principals and, you know, Kelly, our director, and Pedro had a say into what was being purchased, um, for teachers in terms of instruction, of software and instruction. Wanted to make sure everything was going to be aligned with the initiative reviewing and the programs reviewing. So, um, we put this, this form in place. Um, basically there's one for each building. They access it on the website. They fill out the form, um, get this information about what they want, why they want it, how it aligns to, you know, initiative reviewing, um, standards that they are teaching. And then, you know, once they submit it, it goes directly to, the department chair will submit it at the high school level. And, um, the teacher can just submit it at the elementary level. Once it's submitted, it goes directly to the principal. The principal approves it, um, it goes to Kelly. And then Kelly approves it, it goes to me and then, you know, tech has the final trickle on it. You know, there were some kinks with it this year, like the estimate was not being either very large or very small and people filled it out. Um, just some minor things. Um, sometimes, you know, people were filling out forms for renewals, which wasn't really the purpose of it. But, you know, we're, we're kind of working through all of that, but we, we felt it was a good way to help people feel like they were getting some input and saying that what was being purchased. But also we're being smart about it and we're not just, you know, buying everything that everybody wants without any kind of, uh, system for determining what is important.
All right. So that's goal three. Goal four, technology services. And I speak about this a lot and I remind myself, and I have to some days a lot, that we are here customer service. We're here for the kids and the staff. Regardless if it's the same question 10 times or not, we're here to support, we're here to help. When I started, one of the tasks I was assigned by superintendent was to get a help desk ticketing system going, a formal system, make it easier for people to get help because they're frustrated already. So I don't want to make it a harder process. So, um, looked into that and we rolled out, it's all email-based. No more, you have to log into something else. So when you're locked out, you gotta log in to try and get help, things like that. So alls I get to do is send an email. Um, we rolled it out last year and it is working awesome. Like I love it. It comes in on the backend. We have, I assign the tickets to day-to-day basis. We can make notes, things like that on the backend. Alls the user sees is an email. Hey, I need help. Parents use it all the time now. It's really taken off. Parent portal questions, always grade questions. They send it there and it's saved. Um, that way, because I can't remember things as good as I used to. I can go in, type a simple search, like whatever, see if we've had this issue before, what we did. It's great. Um, we did 3,800 tickets last year. Now that's actual submitted, that's not stopped in the hall and stuff. And I went back and I really spent some time, was there something wrong or is it just we're using tech that much? We're using tech that much and I think that's a really good thing. So it, no issue, nothing that is insurmountable. It's little things, it's training things. You try, sometimes you'll get there and the, teach them to fish for themselves. Sometimes it won't. Oh, well, that's what we're here for. That's what we're paid to do. But I was ship, I was surprised at 3,800 tickets. So, um, but I'm there and I'm happy. I think, I don't think our department, I would say 3,800 fits us perfectly. That's about right where we should be, I think. Um, just talking to some cohorts and things around districts, a little bigger than us, smaller and things. So, um, I was happy with that. I know like any staff that I've talked to, they're happy because they can just send an email and it gets fixed. No more logging into this other program and trying to choose some other things. So, by, uh, by moving to having Shannon point four, we used to have a couple of teachers here that would fill in as tech integrators, but really they would sit down the hall and they would help with some Chromebook issues. We've moved away from that model. So now during the day here in the high school, Darren is down there, periods one and nine. So if kids have trouble, they can come, they can walk down, they can talk to them, whatever. I will say to Darren, especially important is making connections one-on-one with kids. It's not just Chromebooks. If they need to go down there and talk to them about something that's going on or whatever, is making a connection with an adult, it's there. And I can't say enough about how good of a job he's done with that going forward. I think that's really important. It's not just fixing it, but actually making connections with some of the kids. We're gonna add a lunch period in there, one of the three lunch periods, starting, I don't know, in a couple of weeks just to see if we get some more kids that need to pop in and stuff. Some teachers have said ninth period's a little late in the day if they have a problem in the middle of the day. So we're gonna try with that. We're always looking at it, what's best, what, what can we work? And, you know, it's right down the hall. It's not a big deal. So, um, that's been working great. I'm happy with that. I think Darren would say the same. The kids come in, they get their problems fixed and I don't really hear any complaints. So I'm happy. Very last thing, previously there was a tech that was split between the EE and GLP. They were stationed at the elementary school is where their base was. Um, and after looking at it for a year, I said, you know what, we're gonna split this up. Lauren had some concerns about not ever having anybody really in the building for a set amount of time. It was just some things broke, come fix it. So, um, we split up Kathy Gage's day now. She spends, it depends, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, she's at the elementary in the morning, Tuesday, Thursday, she's there and she flip flops back and forth. Um, Lauren gave her space. Thankfully she gave her a nice little nook over there when there really isn't a lot of space. Um, and I have only heard good things about it. So, I don't know. She's there. I'm happy. I think, you know, I'm more of a, we need to be out there, not in the back room fixing stuff. Sometimes it's better, but that's, um, that's kind of where I'm at. And I'll turn it back over to Lori for the riveting, riveting data security talk.
Thank you for that intro because there's really nothing as exciting as data security. But it is important. I mean, you'd be surprised, the kind of stuff that happens around here. You know, we've had some. You know, we've had some close calls. We haven't had an actual problem. Thank goodness, knock on wood, but alright, so. Um, to obviously this goal, maintain a safe and secure digital environment for our students and sta- and staff. Um, so we annually evaluate our data privacy agreements. Every vendor that we do business with has to sign an agreement with us if they don't. Um, go through the BOSI's closer, um, because if they do, then BOSI's takes care of all that. Um, we provide annual training to our staff on um, just. Learning about data security and the types of threats that are out there. We want them to stay informed. I'm constantly sending my fun emails about, you know, what kinds of things are circulating, just so they're aware and. We've actually had some things come through to us that we're phishing emails this year, so i- it's good to know. Um, and we just try to teach them to adopt best practices, like. Don't leave your computer unattended without logging off, you know, things like that. Um, don't send student information over email. Um, we so far have um, implemented multi-factor authentication for all staff. Nobody really wanted to do this, but. It is another measure to protect us. So if you guys are familiar with that, you, you know that if you log in. To Google and it might, you know, ask you to enter a code from your phone or, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can do it, but. It doesn't happen every single day. It's just mainly when you switch your location, your network, things like that, anything that kind of. Flags it to, you know, take notice. Um, again, we update all our ed law two D agreements. We updated our district website. The state came out with. Um, an actual set of requirements for things that need to be posted on our website and I made sure that we had that up to date. Um, we conducted a phishing test last year and we might do one again. But um, it was actually pretty funny. We, we sent out a fake email that was um. Prompting people to do things they shouldn't and you wouldn't believe the emails and the calls I had. Did you know this is out there? You should be telling us about it. Why aren't you saying anything? And, and you know, and then there were the people where I entered my information six times and it. Wouldn't let me in and I'm like, oh God, you know, so um. What we realized after doing that is that we still have some learning that needs to take place here. You know, this is constantly. Going to be a challenge for us, so um, we're gonna just continue to train people and, and give them more information. Um, you know, Jeff was actually making fun of me today because I'm a part of a group called. The Western New York DPO Cooperative and he's like, that sounds really fun. Um, but it's just kind of a bunch of nerds like me that get together and talk about data security, but it is very helpful. Because sometimes the information that comes down from the state level or even from Yuri Won Bosi's is more, you know, at Brandon's speed and. I need to actually hear it in educator terms, so this, this helps me. Um. And Brandon is so helpful in auditing user access to software for me. He is constantly going through. Our programs and seeing who still has a license that isn't here anymore or who shouldn't have it and, and we're constantly updating that. For safety as well. Um, so that is it for us, but I wanted to end by thanking. A lot of people. I wanted to thank the technology committee because they are just amazing and we have parents who take time out of their day. To work with us, um, you know, Don works with us. We have lots of great teachers and staff. And um, I also want to give a big thank you to my team because I, I really couldn't work with better people. Um, I've never had a situation where they've let me down or haven't been willing to help me with something, you know. You know, Brandon and I work great together, like he um, is an extremely hard worker. He's always on top of things and. You know, we've, we've added Darren to our team and he's really done a great job so far. Um, Kathy Gage does a great job. And Shannon obviously does a great job integrating all the tech with the teachers in the classroom, so. I'm really proud of all of them and I just wanna, you know, thank them in public, but if any, does anyone have any questions for us? Yes. So we're just starting to dip our toes into learning about artificial intelligence. Um, it's fairly new. Um, the teachers are a little bit nervous about it. Um, because you, you can do a lot with it that we could never do before and it is something that will probably. Have to um, adapt our instructional style to eventually because there's just. A new, a, a new resource out there. It's kind of like when, you know, calculators came out. I think at first people were probably like. Nervous, like, oh, the kids can just look up the answer, you know, what are we going to do in the classroom now? And so now teachers are saying, oh my gosh, a kid can just ask it to write a paper for them and another kid could ask it to write another paper for them and they're, they're not the same. And there's a lot of, you know, um, nervousness and anxiety around that, but it also can be a really great teaching tool, you know, a teacher can say. Write an example essay on this topic at this grade level, make this kind of mistakes and it'll do it. So gone are the days where you have to dig into your file to pull out your old student work and. Blackout the names and show it on the overhead projector to, to give kids examples of, you know, writing. There's a lot of. Lot of different ways we can use it. It can actually provide kids with feedback. Um, but we just need to learn more about it and learn how we can harness it to help us and help our students and right now it's a little bit. Anxiety provoking for people, so.
Daily now and it saves me hours of just checking like syntax, like. Have a comma in the wrong spot, it throws off ten thousand lines of code. It will actually help me as I'm writing it and say, oh, here, we'll make this more efficient. It is. The coolest thing for my type of role. It's like having an extra person that knows pretty much everything, so.
I've sent out a lot to the teachers to start working with. I mean, I don't think we're at the point where, you know. We want students to have full access, but making sure the teachers are aware of it because you can like, um. Lori said, have them do your homework for you. So now on our end, it's about making sure that those teachers are. Doing AI proof assignments. So instead of um, you know, just write an essay on this topic. Then, you know, they're gonna have to teach them eventually on how to use this tool effectively. Like she said, that was a perfect analogy. It was calculators. When I took calculus in high school or any class in high school, we were not allowed to use. Yeah, oh, calculators at all. Now we're giving them out, saying this is mandated and, you know, same thing with computers. Looking up everything, you know, we were, you know, having to look book books in the library for everything we did. Now all these resources and articles and books can be found online and we have to teach our kids how to be. Um, digital citizens on the computer and use that tool in a proper way. Same thing with AI. We're gonna have to teach these kids because this is their future. It's not going away. We have to teach these kids how to use it. In a positive way and how to use it um, the correct way.
Yeah, it's gonna be some really challenging times here in the next, uh, the next few years, also I can say, because I've, I've actually tested it a few times. It can do a whole PowerPoint for you, like with, with graphics. Um, I mean, you, you basically uh, co-pilots, um, the Microsoft version of it. Um, Jeff, I can read Jeff's uh, graduation speech form right now if he wants. I mean, it would, it will, it'll literally, you basically call all the information out in, in about a one or two minute. Talking into your phone or your computer and within three minutes it's done. And you tell it, you know, talk about Eden, talk about corn, talk about, you know, graduating class of like whatever number. And it will. It, I mean, it can basically redesign logos for you too if you want. Um, so it's pretty scary stuff, but uh, something we're all gonna have to navigate. And uh, one question in regards to the phishing test.
Sure.
Um, so in industry right now, uh, we're being tested monthly. So, so we're also being trained on it, like, like properly setting up a um, a printer at home. If you don't change the password, you can get infiltrated that way. But. Uh, I can tell you right now, cyber and ransomware attacks right now is, is really attacking corporate America. And two of the companies I represent have, one of them was crippled for about four weeks. Because of ransomware and um, it's, it's to that point of, you know, sending an email out as a test and. To your point, oh yeah, I entered my information six times. It wouldn't say, it wouldn't take it. Well, basically they just, you know, I know it was probably a test, but. But it, it's out there and, and I think that somebody, I mean, we all, I mean, you know, hate to say it, it might be part of the parent um, education as well too. Is, you know, what, what phishing emails look like and I was joking with Jen here just a second ago. My, my wife teaches at Frontier and she got. Caught. Because she, she answered the email and. She just like, well, it was.
Or real phishing?
No, it was a test.
Okay.
It was a test, but just something that's, that's out there and what you're seeing in industry, so it might not be a bad thing to maybe ramp that up a little bit. Uh, to our staff and, and maybe take it out to the parents as well too, just as what's, what's out there.
Okay, great suggestion. Thanks. Anybody have anything else?
I'm still trying to get over the card catalog being gone.
I remember the microfiche, right?
Thank you. Appreciate.
Alright, thanks guys.
Okay, Laura, you can, you should be able to show your screen now.
Next we have the budget update presentation by Laura Feldman.
Well, my, mine isn't gonna be as exciting as AI and all of that, so. What we're gonna talk about is the revenue side of the budget tonight. We got state aid runs and. The New York State tax cap has to be done, so every year I like to go over it with the board. So we're gonna talk about our state aid categories, our foundation aid, expense-driven aids, excess cost aid and building aid. Foundation aid, what is foundation aid? It's the only unrestricted aid a school district gets. It's based on a complex formula and the point of the formula is to ensure that. All students have access to the same educational resources regardless of the location of where they live. Or the economic status of that community. So there's a history to foundation aid, was enacted in two thousand seven eight. As a result of a lawsuit to ensure educational equity to all students in New York State. It's phasing was halted in two thousand and eight because there was an economic downturn and the formula was never fully funded. Until last year, but in two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Hochul committed to, in the next two years, she said. Fully implement it again as a result of a lawsuit for, from New Yorkers for students' educational rights. So in two thousand twenty-three, foundation aid formulas were fully implemented. In two thousand and twenty-four, in the governor's runs, the hold harmless provision was removed. And the inflation factor within the formula was changed. The result of these two items. Are a reduction in state aid on the governor's runs of two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. Just for our foundation aid. So we're gonna talk about the significant changes to foundation aid, the reduction in the inflation factor. And then we'll talk about the elimination of the current year save harmless provision. Under the current law, the inflation factor would be four point one percent increase on the base foundation amount in the complex formula. What it was is ten years of CPI index averaged. The governor proposed to take the lowest CPI index and the highest CPI index out of that calculation. Which reduced that number to two point four percent. So two point four percent on the base foundation formula reduced. The foundation aid for schools all across New York State. And then the second piece was, there was the same harmless, save harmless provision. Which stated that school districts would not receive less state aid in the following year that they did in the previous year. Unless there were severe economic and financial downturns and spending cuts were across the board. So specifically for foundation made aid, that meant districts. Who were experiencing declining enrollments did not see declines in their foundation aid because the formula is based on a per pupil basis. So the executive budget eliminated this protection and instead instituted a transition adjustment. Whereby districts who are currently receiving more state foundation aid than the formula calculates for them will receive. A wealth adjusted portion of the difference. What that did was it reduced foundation aid for the entire state by a hundred and sixty million dollars. Forty-five percent of New York State school districts will lose foundation aid under this proposal. Eden School is one of the districts impacted negatively by these changes. So we're gonna look at our foundation aid and we're gonna start out saying, this is the first time in the history of foundation aid that Eden has ever. Received reduced foundation aid numbers in the governor's run. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we received seven point six million and twenty-two, twenty-three, eight million. Twenty-three, twenty-four, eight point nine million, but the governor's run is projecting only eight point seven million or two hundred and one thousand. Eight hundred and eighty-seven dollar reduction for the Eden School District. Any questions so far? So now we're gonna look at our expense-driven aids. What's an expense-driven aid? We spend the money in one school year and they pay us the following. So our BOSI's aid, which we get sixty-seven point nine percent of all. Adeble expenditures. Went from one point one million to one point two, to one point four and it's down to one point three million. For the twenty-four, twenty-five governor runs. One of the things within that formula. Is that every BOSI's employee. Districts only get to share thirty thousand, the first thirty thousand of their salary. Back in the seventies when this was implemented, that was great. Now that's not even a full-time minimum wage person working forty hours a week. So imagine for school districts, technology people and other specialists, it significantly is slowing down. Expense-driven aid for BOSI's. We get technology hardware. We get twenty-four dollars and twenty cents per student. To purchase technology hardware. We just heard that even an inexpensive Chromebook is two hundred and fifty dollars per student. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we got twenty-one thousand two hundred and five and twenty-two, twenty-three, we got twenty-one thousand fifty-eight. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-seven. You can see as our enrollment declines a little, so does our aid. And in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're projected at twenty-four, at nineteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. So we're gonna now look at our software, library and textbook. Our soft, where we get fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents per student. Our library, we get six dollars and twenty-five cents per student and our textbook gate is fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents per student. Now you have to spend the money in the prior year. To be paid it in the next year. If you spend more, you don't get above your fifty-eight, for textbooks, fifty-eight, twenty-five per student. If you spend less, you only get up to the, that amount times your student population. Compared to what you spent. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we spent, we received a hundred and five thousand. We received basically the same in twenty-two, twenty-three, but you'll see a dip in twenty-three, twenty-four. That's because the library books that were ordered did not come in due to supply chain issues. So we didn't spend the money, so they wouldn't provide us the aid on that money. So it went down eighty-one thousand. And we're expecting to be back up to a hundred and three thousand for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We look at our transportation aid. We get seventy-two point eight percent of every aidable dollar. So we go from one point five million. To one point six, to one point nine, to a little over two million. We haven't even begun to purchase electric buses yet. So our total aid is going for these service aids is going from two point eight to three million to three point five. Up, or three point four, up to three point five million for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We're gonna talk about excess cost aid. This is for our neediest students. So. There's high excess costs, which is students who are educated in public schools. Public schools are students educated here in Eden. And students educated at BOSI's or other public schools. So the first forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars of their education does not receive any aid. So the first forty thousand eight hundred seventy two dollars of their education does not receive any aid. Every dollar above that receives sixty two point five percent aid. So. As you can see, our aid fluctuates, it goes up, it goes down. That is dependent upon the students, where they're getting their educational services and when they graduate. Our private excess cost aid is students that go to a nonprofit setting. We get eighty nine percent from the first dollar for the students that are going to the private settings. Places like Summit Learning. Baker Victory Services. They're getting, so they're going from two hundred thirty four thousand in the beginning, we're up to four hundred seventy nine thousand and you're going to say. Well, why don't we send them all to the privates? Because there's a law that says students must be placed in the least restrictive environment. To give them their education. So we put students where they belong to get the best services that they need. And. We get reimbursed the following year based on where they were educated and what percentages we can receive. Our building aid. This is our state reimbursement over fifteen years for our capital improvements. The state's mortgage payment for us when we pay our bond notes. So we get seventy eight point two percent of every dollar that we spend. So in twenty one twenty two, we had two point one million. Twenty two twenty three, one point six. Twenty three twenty four was one point five nine and we're down to one point five three for twenty four twenty five based on our amortization schedules. So what does this do for our district? In twenty three twenty four, our aid was fourteen million six hundred eighty eight thousand forty three dollars. Our proposed state aid from the governor is fourteen million five hundred twenty four thousand six hundred fifty seven dollars. A decrease for the first time of a hundred sixty three thousand three hundred eighty six dollars. One point one one percent decrease. This is the first decrease in recent years here at Eden. So as we talked. Foundation aid went down two hundred and one thousand eight hundred eighty seven. But overall, because we had increases in our. Reimbursable aids. We are only down one hundred sixty three. Three eighty six. And in the meantime, our costs keep escalating. Any questions? We're going to talk about my next favorite subject, if anybody's still awake. We're going to talk about the property tax cap calculation. We all know there's a two percent property tax cap out there. That's the perception. Now we're going to show you where it comes from. First of all. March first of each year, we have to tell the New York State Controller. What our calculation is and whether or not we plan to go for a simple majority or super majority on our vote. We're going to talk about our property task cap terminology, our capital exclusions. We're going to go line by line through the property tax cap calculation and come up with the tax levy threshold. We're going to start with the tax based growth factor. The New York State Office of Real Property tells us how much new growth has occurred in our community. What they consider new growth is a new garage, an addition on a house, a new home, not a remodel inside, just. New expansive. That's point oh one four five percent that will be used in the formula. Then the allowable levy growth factor, which is provided by the New York State Controller. Which is the average consumer price index for the year. Maximum of two percent. So the. calculation is over two percent. So this is where the misnomer of a two percent tax cap comes in. It is merely a factor in a mathematical problem. We have payments in lieu of taxes pilots. They're negotiated by the Erie County Industrial Development Agency. They reduce property taxes for up to ten years on new businesses. It allows the businesses to get underfoot before they're paying the full share. After ten years, they're moved on to the regular tax rule. Eden is anticipating twenty four thousand five hundred forty nine dollars from pilot payments. For two solar projects that are occurring in our district. We had available carryover. Available carryover is part of last year's levy calculation where the. Board of Education saw fit to go out and levy an amount lesser than the maximum. So there's a hundred and fifty six thousand six hundred thirty two dollars. Available for this year's calculation. Our capital exclusion is our local share of the debt service, which was six hundred ninety two thousand three hundred sixteen dollars last year. And next year it will be six hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. So now we're going to start to put it all together and. We're going to look at, we're going to take the prior year levy of fifteen million seven hundred sixty nine thousand seven hundred fifty one dollars. And multiply it by the tax base growth factor of zero point one four five. To give us fifty million nine hundred ninety eight thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. We received pilots for the twenty three twenty four school year of five hundred dollars. And then we reduce out any judgments and torts that we had, which were none. And then we reduce the capital exclusion. The six hundred ninety two thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. That gives us an adjustable prior year levy of fifteen thousand three oh six five ninety six. Which is what gets multiplied by the two percent, which gives us fifteen million six hundred twelve thousand seven hundred twenty eight dollars. We reduce that by the pilots that we expect to receive of twenty four thousand five hundred forty nine. And the available carryover is brought back in in case we needed it this year. It is only available for this year's use and if it's not used this year, it goes away. So the tax limit before exemptions is fifteen million seven hundred forty four thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. To that, we add any torts and judgments we're aware of, which we're not. There is an ERS. Exemption this year because the employer contribution rate increased by more than two percent. So there's four thousand six hundred fourteen dollars available. TRS did not increase more than two percent. So there's none. And then we put the local capital levy share of six hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred nineteen. Which gives us a levy threshold of sixteen million four hundred forty one thousand one hundred forty four dollars. We are allowed with a simple majority. To increase the levy by six hundred seventy one thousand three hundred ninety three dollars or four point three percent. Now there's a decision that I need to be made. It's a preliminary decision. The OSC Office of State Controller asks that we tell them. Does the Eden Central School Board plan to levy less than a four point three percent increase? The reason they ask this is. They need to know when our voters come in, are we looking for a simple majority or super majority? So my question of this board at this time is, do. You want me to answer this question with a yes or a no?
Let's make sure we understand the question first, okay? The maximum this district can raise taxpayers taxes is four point three percent without going to a super majority. And as Laura just pointed out, a super majority is.
Sixty seven percent plus one.
Sixty percent plus one, is that what you said?
Sixty seven percent.
Say it in the microphone.
Sixty seven percent plus one.
Thank you. Okay, so if we, if if this board is more comfortable with a tax increase. Less than four point three. I'm thinking Mrs. Telepant is. That then then the answer is. Yes, right? We're less than four point three. That's the answer you're looking for is less.
We're not going to exceed four point three.
Right, right. So let me ask you a question, Mrs. Feldman. If if by chance foundation aid were increased significantly. Would all of these figures change?
No, foundation aid would not have any impact on this calculation. This is simply on property taxes.
Okay.
It may have a decision citing factor for the board. Of what they needed to maintain operations.
Okay, but in terms of needing a super majority or not, that wouldn't have an impact?
No.
Okay.
So Jack, do you want to answer this question?
Um, there's no chance we're over four point three.
I figure it was probably, it's probably your last time doing this, so I figured I'd let you.
Yeah, it's fun. Yeah, uh, yeah, we're not going to be. Um, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think based on the head nodding there, we won't be above four point three with no chance.
Okay.
We'll find the way. We'll cut back.
And then this is just the remaining budget calendar up here. I won't read it all.
Can we just so just so the public understands when we're saying four point three, I know we all talk two percent before four point three because of the calculation is really our two percent.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Just so we're all. Even though it doesn't say two percent. It is our two percent.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out that we are still very early in the budget process. Um, this budget process is is much more similar to what districts across the state experienced. Prior, uh, you know, three, three years prior and and before that time. Where our governor's run would come out, it would be very confusing. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be happy with it. And then the legislature would would go to work. I can tell you there's unified support across the state. Um, opposing the governor's plan, not only um, to reduce foundation aid, but also um. The the current plan and how uh, inflation has been factored in. I expect uh, that we will see very different runs uh, in the next several weeks. I think the budget is due by the end of March, correct?
Yes, but I was told today at my meeting that with the legislative calendar, there's a good chance the. New York State budget will not be on time this year.
Okay, like I said, this is, this is like everything, like things used to be. So so you know, we we need to plan, plan for the most difficult scenarios and that's what we're doing. Um, and you know, I I agree with the board sentiment that we need to be very fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. And a a four point three or greater uh, tax impact is uh, would not be palpable here, so.
I I guess I would also like to point out as my time as a school board member dwindles. You know, these are, the state says the what Laura and and Jeff are forced to put up with is. These are the numbers, these are the calculations right up until we don't like them. And then we're gonna shove something else down it. And I've been on the school board for nine years and I've enjoyed uh. Many moments of it, but I I don't enjoy. Playing by the rules until we change the rules and um. I think we've been faced with that, you know, every year that I've been involved in the budget process and. Um, you know. I realize numbers change on a state level taxation changes, but from a, from a school's perspective. You know, it's critical that we educate our kids and and it's a, it's a. Super big challenge to say, yeah. Inflation is significantly higher and therefore we're we're golden. They're going to raise it. Via the inflation number and then they decide to cut it almost in half. And that's just uh, just incredibly unfair to. Um. School districts across the state. So. I'll, I'll, I'll take that to Mrs. Hokel, too.
Any other questions? Okay, so I, you know, Laura did share the the budget calendar with us, so she'll report on the property tax cap by March first. Or and our next discussion will be on March twentieth. Um, at our next board meeting, okay? Right. Thank you, Ms. Feld.
Uh, at this time, we have a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
At this time, we have a public comment. Session approximate position in time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status, for example. A parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two minute time limit. Buddy?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Gerard Matuiko. Lifelong member of this town and. Graduating member of this school district. It's recently come to my attention that we don't have a lice policy in this school district. All the neighboring school districts have a lice policy. If kid has live bugs in their hair, they get sent home, they get treated. They get screened by the nurse before they're allowed to return to class. Our district does not have such policy, at least not in the middle school, high school. Um. I have. Three kids in this district. I have another one who will be attending this district. In my pocket, I have almost a thousand dollars worth of receipts from Naughty Knits, which is a lice clinic in. Williamsville, I believe it is. It's a very stressful situation to have my child come home with thirty five live bugs in her hair. We can't prove it came from school. We're not the most social family in this district. We don't really go anywhere. We don't. We don't go out. We don't. My kids go to school and they come home. I don't understand why we don't have a lice policy. I talked to the vice or the principal of the middle school. Mister Servoni, I believe his name is. He told me that because it doesn't spread disease, that's the reason. He didn't really offer many solutions other than. What do you want me to do about it? What do you want me to do about it? What do you want me to do about it? So I would like. You all to discuss and. Try to come up with some kind of. Lice policy. I understand they don't spread disease, but it is very disgusting. It is very stressful. And it is very expensive to be treated. And very time consuming. My wife has spent countless hours combing through. My three daughters hairs. Very thick, long heads of hair. And um. That's all I have to say, I guess, tonight. So. I don't know how to. Get an answer from this. Do I have to come back to another meeting? How does that go? This is my first time at a school board meeting.
Just make sure, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Silver. Just make sure we have your name and contact information. Go and you.
Mrs. DeLaPenta knows how to reach me.
Okay, well, for for me, if just make sure your name's on on the sign in sheet that's behind you.
Did I leave a number, email address?
As long, as long as you're, as long as I can read your last name, we will, we'll be able to figure out your your number. Okay?
Got it.
And then either I remember, my staff will be in touch.
Appreciate that.
You're back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
New business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of high school English teacher Stephen Pierce. Be accepted effective July first, twenty twenty four. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Pierce for his twenty nine years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Mary Maxon be permanently appointed as Director of Pupil Personnel Services effective March second, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't know, we may need to talk about this one for a while. First off, man, welcome back. Hey.
Yes.
Welcome back and uh, the board has my recommendation and and uh, it's well deserved. You are an outstanding asset to our team and our district. You work harder than anybody I know, much to your detriment, and you don't always listen to me when I tell you to take a break. So I'm saying this publicly and recorded and in front of your spouse. So so thank you for for all that you've done and 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 your leadership here. Uh, it's made it made a huge difference and and I'm I'm proud to uh, call you a colleague.
Any other discussion? You want a table until tomorrow or next day? You know? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, it's not official yet, so don't don't say anything bad about it. I'm honored and privileged to um, be in such an amazing district, both personally and professionally. Um, we received a lot of support and I really appreciate that. Um, I can't say enough about the department that I work with, um, the community, the district, the teachers. All of you, Mr. Sipio, um, my colleagues. On the administrative team, they've all been truly amazing. I've been in poor distress between being a teacher. And assistant principal, principal, and now a director of people personnel services. And I can say by far, I'm so proud to be a racer. That's an amazing district and community and I'm. For children to get an education in the families here and who we work with. So thank you for the same honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you.
It seemed like yesterday we just hired you. Means we've been on the board way too long, right, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, congratulations.
All right, congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Tracy Wheeler be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Rebecca Actel be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Caitlin. Lay, lie, sorry, Caitlin Lie be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Brittany Brokowski be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period. Colton George be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Skylar Stulek be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Susan. Misselli be permanently appointed as cafeteria monitor effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period. John Sullivan be permanently appointed as a laborer effective March sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Kimberly Mazurkowitz be permanently appointed as a bus attendant effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Patty Dollis be appointed on probation. As a cafeteria monitor and a bus attendant effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty four. And ending October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jillian Smigelski be appointed on probation as a part time point five. Teacher aide effective February fifth, twenty twenty four and ending October fourth, twenty twenty four. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Melissa Cron Gallman be appointed as a home instructor effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
New business. Resolve that the Board of Education appoints the law firm of Bond, Shonek and King P L L C. As legal counsel for the remainder of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a bit of an explanation. It's unusual that I would bring this to you in the month of February. Usually we, we appoint. Board counsel at the reorg meeting in July. However, there's, there's been a shift in, in the firm that's handled a lot of our. Lot of our legal needs in terms of Harris Beach. Harris Beach is parting ways with their educational division. So while our legal team won't change, the, the firm that they represent will. So. Familiar names like Tracy Lepardi and Jeff Weiss will still be working with the district. They'll just be working. Through the, the firm that was, that was named above.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a resolution dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Of the Board of Education of Eden Central School District, Erie County, New York. Declaring the district's proposed capital outlay project involving the reconstruction and construction. Of modest upgrades and improvements to the middle school, high school building to be a type two action under SECR. And authorizing, authorizing and directing the inclusion of funding for such project in the district's proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Whereas the time span between meetings of the Board of Education may cause a delay in the formal appointment of staff. Needed for the twenty twenty three, twenty four school year. And whereas candidates recommended for positions may take positions elsewhere or impact school and or district operations. If their appointments are delayed, therefore be it resolved. That the superintendent of schools be authorized to offer candidates appointments. Other than administrative appointments, provided the names of such candidates have been sent to the Board of Ed at least five days prior. To the offer of employment and further provided that no member of the Board of Ed has raised any question about any candidate. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education will officially approve such appointments. At its regularly scheduled meeting subsequent to offers of employment by the superintendent. In accordance with the above procedures.
Second.
Any discussion?
How about a brief explanation?
Sure.
Slight, slight change in, in operation. It still gives the district the opportunity to onboard. Staff members in between board meetings that we've done recently, but now this would give me authorization except for administrative positions. To, to, to start these folks after a five day grace period in which you could ask questions. Once their, their names and materials are shared with you. So you won't need to necessarily vote. The email, which is not really a, a proper practice, but it still gives you the, the same rights as a board member to, to, to question and. And, and potentially delay someone's start date. It's a slight nuance.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following high school textbooks be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Precalculus math for calculus five E. Stewart. That number seventy one copies. Calculus math for calculus three E Stewart, that ISBN number twenty seven copies.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, GLP after school AIS program to be staffed by two teachers for a total of five. One hour sessions per teacher at thirty dollars per session, not to exceed three hundred dollars total be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bus route spreadsheet dated February second, twenty twenty four be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school calendar. Be revised to reflect, reflect an emergency close day on April eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion, please?
Sure, I can give you a bit of an explanation. So, so this is April eighth is the, is the solar eclipse day and, and we will be in the path of totality. And I really wanted to just say that in public. And, and I, and I'm recommending we use an emergency closure day specifically as opposed to a recess day. Because. Our out of district students would, would still need to be transported on a recess day. And with the gridlock that's expected and the amount, the amount of influx of people coming to. The path of totality, good, I got to say twice. I, I want to make sure that our buses are, are, are not on the road. So that's, that's. That's reason number one for an emergency closure date. The second reason is we are one of, of a very few districts that were slated to be open that day. I want to be cognizant of any staffing issues we could run into for, for staff members whose. Own children do not have school that day as it is the. That was slated to be our first day to return from spring recess. And we are, we are, as a reminder, in the path of totality. By the way, if we do this right, we will all be in great position for the next time this happens in our region. The year twenty one forty four. Yes, and only if you're gonna be on the board in twenty one forty four. All right. Could be more than that.
All right, any other discussion regards to the emergency closure day? I'm not gonna say that. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the draft of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school calendar be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be nominated for Erie Two Bosie's Board of Education. Incumbent Gregory Cole, Silver Creek School District. Incumbent Robert Carpenter, not related to me, Falconer. Central School District, incumbent Sylvester Cleary, Forestville Central School District. And incumbent Nancy Rankins Dunkirk Central School District.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
We now have the business report.
So I just wanted to update the board. Every year when. The local tax collectors are done collecting school tax, it's sent back to the county. And the county is legally obligated to make us whole for any taxes that we have not received to date, whether they have been paid or not. So we just received this week the final payment of two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety four dollars. And of that, ninety four seventy six was interest and penalties that were levied on those taxes. The second thing I wanted to tell the board is for the first time we've invested in a three month. T treasury bill. The treasury bill is guaranteed and we will get five point one five percent interest. And we also purchased with some of our reserve funds, a certificate of deposit. And the interest on that for three months will be four point six nine. We took the highest interest rates that we could get, which were short term. I know that this. Fed is slated to lower interest rates, but we went with the higher ones to get us, to maximize our investments at this time. And we will reinvest in April.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So earlier this evening is part of the consent agenda. The board approved a one year extension of our health insurance contract with Univera. I want to take a few minutes to share with the board and the community, the thought, effort and collaboration that was behind this recommendation. Our district partnered with Univera to provide health insurance, I believe, is in twenty twenty, just before my arrival. And the district, they've been a good partner and responsive to our employees' health related needs. Having said that, it is important for the district to determine if the benefits and costs being offered are comparable or better than other health insurance. To that end, with the help of small consulting, we did seek proposals from health insurers. And on February first, three finalists presented to the Labor Management Committee. The committee then convened to weigh the merits of each proposal and to make a recommendation regarding the preferred insurance carrier. Thank you to Darren Azarella, Sherry Stevens, Linda Schwantz, Paul O'Connor, Mike Sitzman, Amanda. Amanda Pechinsky, Laura Feldman, Kelly LaRosa and Lauren Carter for being an integral part of this important work. It should be noted that our health, health insurance costs will be raised by a very modest one point five percent. It's a very reasonable increase and is based on our members' good health and good use of their health insurance. Any questions about that? Okay, a couple of brief notes on the construction front. Our unit ventilators are in. And going to be installed next week. Is that right, Mr. Sitzman? So those are the air handling units that will be installed in the remodeled classrooms in Eden Elementary. That's the last, last piece to, to go into those classrooms. You, you, hopefully you saw the, the finished tile work in the hallway outside the library here. And the new girls softball scoreboard will be installed in the next few weeks and should be operational for the start of the spring season. Any questions for me?
Will that scoreboard be on the path of totality for the?
We're gonna, yes, actually it will be.
Just chuck. All right, next we have the student report. Jana?
Hi, my name is Jana Greco. The artic greater race was on February, December twenty second, two thousand twenty three. Students made teams of five to pulse the sled with a teacher on it. Teams competed to win the title. Grades tw- six through twelve were outside to enjoy the race. Twenty two teams participated and Miss Canix Team One trophy was made by. Mister Saramac and students. Trophy will be passed on from year to year to winning teachers and teams. I did participate in this and this was a very fun experience and I hope this tradition keeps going. For red ribbon week, the middle school and high school did. On Monday, January eighth, two thousand twenty four, don't get mixed up with drugs. We wore mismatch clothes. On Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty four, or on drug day. We were caramel print clothes. On one. On Wednesday, January tenth. Two thousand twenty four dramatic duo where we twinned with someone. Thursday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty four, teamed up against drugs. We wore. Our favorite team spirit. On Friday, January twelfth, twenty four. We were all red. Kids escaped drugs assembly was for the middle school. And high school on the morning of January twelfth. This week is the be kind week sponsored by Safe Promise Club. In middle school and high school student council. Monday, Monday, we make a change Monday and wild about kindness. We weren't animal prints. How can you make the world more awesome? We could give a compliment, hold a door, introduce yourself to someone new. Tuesday, we did be kind bingo. In homeroom, we received a bingo board. When we received a bingo, we went to Miss Doctor's room two hundred for a special prize. On Wednesday, we did worry less Wednesday. During all lunches, students could have stopped by and make a mindful and breathing stick with Safe Promise Club. And eat in middle school student council. Tomorrow, we will do thankful Thursday. We can write a note to friend, classmate or teacher to give it to them. Hearts will be available outside the cafeteria. Friday, we will feel the love Friday. We'll bring in can, non-carryable foods and, and items or cash donations. Donations for the food pantry, the Eden North Collins Food Pantry. On Thursday, February eighth, two thousand twenty four, four high school students attended the Erie County. Student leader, leadership summit at Orchard Park High School. At this summit, student leaders from across Western New York region came together to share ideas, collaborations. And inspire leadership. April on Baskin, Erie County Legislature was the guest speaker at the event. The people who attended this what, this event were Inabelle Kozlak, Josiah Devlet. Taylor Phillips and myself, Jana Greco. And that is your current updates about our school activities.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Very good.
Yeah, that was.
Or we brought roundtable, two things. Not about the path of totality, but. Do, did, I had heard, and I don't know, because I'm, I'm retired now. But did schools get the glasses to send home with the kids or do they get the state ed send out glasses for? School districts?
We have glasses to send home with the elementary and primary students, is that right? Do we have, do we, do we have glasses for the secondary students? Do you know, Mr. McDonough?
Did they, did you get any glasses for the total eclipse to send home with kids?
So I think that was supposed to come from like the state ed or something.
Yeah, they did. And then they reduced our, our foundation aid because they spent it on glasses.
True. And the second thing. True. And the second thing, um. Because I have a relative that's a teacher at the GLP, they shared. The video that I think the PTA or the district put out about going around and interviewing the kids. At GLP and the Eden Elementary, asking them what their favorite thing about the school district was and the community. And it was, if you haven't seen it. You definitely have to check it out. It is just heartwarming the kids. I mean, definitely they were not scripted to say what they said and it was cute, very cute. I found it on Facebook.
Anybody else?
Anybody?
All right.
The next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four at six P M in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium.
You'll be in charge. I'm in Philly that night.
Budget workshop will be March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Uh, special Board of Education meeting tentative budget adoption, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Regular Board of Education meeting and Bosse's component vote date Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. No meeting on Wednesday of that week. Okay. Public hearing on the budget, May seventh, twenty twenty-four, six P M. And the annual, annual budget vote, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, nine A M to nine P M in the middle school, high school auditorium foyer. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session. To discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations again.
Thank you.